All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 18th Board of Selectmen's meeting. We'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ally, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. All right. Sorry, we're just having one little technical difficulty, but we'll go into... Do we have anyone here for citizens input? No? Jeff, I saw you near the sheet. You're not... No citizens input? Okay. All right, so we have a pretty full agenda, but to lead us off this evening, we have Ally. It's always a pleasure to have Ally in.
Do we have the recording on or...?
Um, I think as long as you have a speaker, a microphone in front of you, wherever you're more comfortable is good.
Here's fine?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Paul?
Do you want to... Bill, can she have the remote?
Yeah, does she need the clicker or...?
Yeah, please.
There you go.
Just watch me in case I get any hand signals from the back.
Which one is...?
I think you just push the circle to the right or to the left.
Okay, all right.
All right. Offscore Veterans Services. Hey, there we go. This is me, Ally Rodriguez. I'm a United States Army veteran. I did hire a new assistant, Lauren Burrow. I acquired her from the town of Middleborough. She was doing the same job there. My... Our admin position became available, and she applied. Services, this is what my office provides. Everything from benefit information and the guidebook that the VA distributes every year to bonuses for Massachusetts veterans who deployed overseas. They get a bonus $500 just for being enlisted, and then $1,000 if you have an overseas deployment. Discharge paperwork when veterans need a copy of their DD-214. I help acquire that, provide flags, and properly dispose of retired flags. So a lot of the citizens will come into town and say, hey, you know, this flag is dirty or it's tattered. How do I get rid of it? Just leave it to me. I give it to the Boy Scouts, who then properly retire flags. Grave markers. If an eligible veteran has deceased, they are entitled to a grave marker. I help fill that out. We decide if it's either bronze or marble, what the inscription should say, and then we deliver it to Rock Hill Cemetery, and they install it. Other services, memorial squares. So we do help upkeep with memorial squares around town. Veterans grave, my office does provide upkeep for that. Wartime deployment bonuses, widow benefits. So if a veteran dies of a service-connected disability, the widow does get entitlement. Unfortunately, it's not automatic. It's a very long and strenuous process. I help with that. Tons of... Transportation, a lot of... So transportation is an issue statewide. And if a veteran needs transportation to either a VA appointment or medical appointment, coordinate with local nonprofits and help them get to their appointments. So this is roughly just VA claims. This is not 115. This is just veterans' claims. In 2021, I filed 100 service-connected disability claims. 25 were out of state, and that means Maine, Rhode Island, Connecticut, and New Hampshire. Massachusetts is the only state in the Union that has a VSO representing every town. Every other state is by county. So you have one veteran or one VSO trying to help hundreds of veterans. And oftentimes, the veteran doesn't even get a call back. So they come to me, and we help file claims because a VSO doesn't have to be specific to that certain state or town. 15 VA burial claims, five education claims, three welcome-home bonuses, six annuity applications. So in Massachusetts, this is also specific just to Mass. If a veteran is 100% service-connected disability, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts will pay you $2,000 in February and in August just for being 100%. Only Massachusetts does that. And then five death indemnity claims. Again, DIC claims is if a veteran died of a service-connected disability. It's otherwise known as survivor's pension. Nope. Okay. Year in view. So we did some... Did I miss some stuff? I did. Sorry, guys. Okay. Chapter 115. So Chapter 115, again, is a Massachusetts-only program, and it is for indigent veterans and their spouses. My office has 28 active cases, and with the Chapter 115 monies, we pay out to these individuals. 75% of the money reimbursed comes right back to Foxborough. In 2021, we distributed $195,752.58. In 2020, it was only $173,658. So that's a big amount. Cost of prescriptions went up. Medicare will reimburse that, fuel, co-payments, everything. So even though we have less cases, we distributed a lot more money. But 75% of the $195,000 is coming back to Foxborough. 2021 year in view. I had a pretty busy year, actually. 1,000 phone calls and email inquiries. I did hire a new admin assistant, Lauren Burrow. We donated and distributed 19 Vietnam Memorial pins and books to Vietnam, celebrating the 50th anniversary of the war. Massachusetts has this really amazing book called "The Time to Honor," and a lot of Vietnam veterans didn't even know. So every time a Vietnam veteran came to my office, I'm like, hey, did you get your book? And they were just... Most of them cried because it was just amazing. It brought them right back to the war. Fond memories, but also not so fond. A field trip to the American Heritage Museum. So that was supposed to happen in 2020. Nobody went anywhere in 2020, so we rescheduled. And it was pretty amazing. If you've never been, I highly recommend it. 2,500 flags distributed for Memorial Day. Patriot Place Hometown Heroes Collaboration. They wanted some local veterans who are still serving, actually, to put on their hometown heroes at Patriot Place. So we collaborated with them. I was voted in as the Southeast Massachusetts Veterans Service Officers Association Vice President. Thank you very much. CrossFit Torque here in Foxborough did a little food drive and essentials donation, and we were able to donate tons of food and some clothes and some toiletries that some veterans, you know, really need. And then this one was really special. Collaboration with Fire Department, Police Department to find a family of a deceased veteran. A couple of months ago, a veteran just passed away on the sidewalk. No family, no children, no spouse, no nothing. And I got a phone call saying, hey, this is a veteran. And I'm like, oh, gosh, okay, I'll do the paperwork. Like, no, you don't understand. You have to take control of the body. And I'm like, oh, no, I don't. Like, this is way beyond my job scope. So myself and the Fire Department, we entered the premises, and we were actually able to find a long-lost niece. And she became next of kin, so she was able to give him a proper burial. So that was actually kind of cool. And then, of course, they do the 24-hour vigil for POW MIA Day right there on the Common. The Rolling Thunder comes... It's just the Patriot Riders, the Sharon Patriot Riders. They are fantastic. They hold vigil overnight with us. It's a really cool event. Craft Group Memorial Day Flag Ceremony. Last year, they had a bed of flags representing veterans who we lost, and that was pretty interesting. 10 coats donated in collaboration with Coats for Vets. Thanksgiving turkey donation. So this year, we gave away over 100 turkeys to veterans in Foxborough. On top of that, CBS Sporting calls me and says, hey, we have about 20 turkeys. Can you get rid of them? And I said, sure, absolutely. They lied. It wasn't 20. It was 70. It was 70 turkeys. And I did it on a Tuesday from about 9:00 in the morning to about 9:00 at night. I got rid of all the turkeys. So I was able to make 70 families pretty happy. Captel telephones, that's free of charge. It's for veterans who are hard of hearing. You know, you guys know what a caption telephone is, so we were able to give away three of those. And then our Veterans Day program with Paralympian Joel Hunt, which was a huge success. I was very proud of that. This is Lauren. She is a lifetime member of the Women's Purple Heart Auxiliary. She is an Army wife. Her husband, actually, was our Veterans Day speaker in 2019, Kevin Burrow. 28 years in Christmas service. She studied Nutrition Health and Studies, and she's a former bodybuilder figure competition. So she's actually pretty amazing. If you haven't met her, I recommend just knocking on my door and saying hi. The Heritage Museum field trip. It's, again, it's amazing. If you haven't gone, please do. It's just incredible. Veterans Day with the 215th Army Band, members of the Sage School. And up there is Paralympian Joel Hunt asking some questions and answering some questions with the Sage School kids. Coats for Vets, so we all know Officer Jimmy Para. So what happened was they had police departments from all over Massachusetts. You lined up. They had the lights and sirens going. It was really cool. And then you had huge trucks, as you can see, just filled with Home Depot buckets. Inside those buckets was a coat, some snacks, gloves, some water, and some hand sanitizer, some masks, I believe. And it was just a really cool day, and we were able to give away 10 buckets. Memorial Day, me and Mr. Kraft, his son, and then the General Manager of Patriot Place. So that wreath that I'm laying there, it was funny because it was on the table, and it was heavier than anticipated. So when Mr. Kraft and I went to go pick it up, we're like, oh, my gosh, it was so heavy, and we almost dropped it. And we're like, oh, gosh, let's not drop the memorial wreath. This was the fundraiser, Dystopian Reflections. So fun fact, I belly dance, and this is our troupe, and they put on a show, Dystopian Reflections, and the proceeds came to Foxborough Veteran Services in the amount of $500. This is my veterans group. I hold every first and third Mondays at the Council on Aging. The women here, they are from the company called H-Wave, an alternative to opioids for pain medication. It's essentially a TENS unit for the whole body, but it's incredible, and so much so that my husband actually became a believer, and he uses it. This is probably the most proud of in 2021. So I have a friend, we used to work before we came here. We used to work together in the homeless, veteran homeless world, and he deployed. He's in the National Guard in Michigan. So he goes to Michigan. He deploys, like, hey, I'm having some problems with some National Guardsmen working on their claim. I said, sure. So I ended up helping his whole squad. And as a thank you, they flew a flag in my honor over Afghanistan. And then, of course, Mr. Ralph Bennett. And that's it. Any questions?
We know you do a lot.
That's not like everything is just, you know, it's like, hey, you have like five minutes. I'm like, okay, five minutes, let's go.
That was a pretty impressive year, and obviously, we're always here to partner at any of those events you have. You know, we always more than enjoy getting up and speaking and recognizing the veterans in our community and...
Well, I certainly do appreciate the support. Absolutely.
It's some amazing stuff that you have there and some unexpected things as well that we didn't know.
Yeah. Surprise.
Yeah. You're always keeping us on our toes.
Yes, ma'am. If no other questions?
Questions other than if we want to discuss the project?
Oh, yes, sorry, just bring this on you. But there's an Eagle Scout project that we'd like you to talk about. We were going to do it during Selectmen's Update, but then we thought it made more sense during this part, if you don't mind talking about that.
Yes, so Sean, and his last name is Gasey, so forgive me, called me a couple of months ago and said, hey, I have an Eagle Scout project. I want to incorporate Veteran Services. I'm like, okay, what you got, kid? And he's like, I want to do this thing. And I'm like, sure. So I signed off on the paperwork. Today, it was unveiled, and it was a longstanding resident of Foxborough who served in the Spanish-American War. So the flag is original to the Spanish-American War, as well as the certificate. There are some brass rounds that are there. And there's a QR code, which I thought this was pretty interesting. So it's like the old and the new. If you walk up to the shadow box and you snap a picture, it'll actually bring you to Sean's own page, and it talks about the flag and the flag etiquette and some trivia facts and things about the Spanish-American War that it's a forgotten war, like no one really remembers the Spanish-American War. So he found this resident, found the certificate, found the flag, and now it's a permanent fixture in Town Hall. So that's pretty amazing. He did an excellent job. It was unveiled today. Just well done. Like, I'd love to see kids involved in veteran stuff because veterans, you know, grandpa. Everybody thinks, you know, a veteran's a grandpa, right? But that's not the demographics anymore. So kudos to Sean. They did an excellent job.
Sean Kelly.
Sean Kelly. Yes, thank you so much. Yes.
That's amazing. He'll check out the QR code.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
2021 was like the rise of the QR code again.
Well, right. We couldn't go anywhere.
All right, wonderful. Check it out. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
No?
Yeah?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do, Ally.
Thank you. All right. Up next is our change of manager. Okay, my agenda is from this last Thursday, okay?
Yeah.
What was mine that I brought? Thank you. All right, so do we have them here? Is Katie on? Are we just reading?
They're on Zoom.
That's who's on Zoom? Okay.
I got in too.
I'm in now. Yeah. I got a new one. Okay, so for our next agenda item, which is just a change of manager for Splitsville, I understand that we have the new manager on the line.
Yes, how are you? I'm Brian Peterson.
Is he here? Okay, he's not here yet? I did see someone on earlier.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah. He's on, I think. Just give him a second to...
Yeah, how do I turn this up? Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Brian.
Okay, how are you?
Katie, can you hear me?
We can hear someone really, really faintly. One second.
Katie, I think.
Sounds like it might be Katie, but we can't... Just give us one second, Katie.
Can you see who's on from yours? We can't hear you guys.
Brian, can you just start the video on your end, too?
Yeah.
Sure.
You got a video?
All right. We see Mr. Peterson, and I think we can hear you. Can you just give us a test hello?
Hello, how are you?
Okay, we can hear you and we can see you. Can you hear us and see us?
I can.
All right, great. So I think this is kind of a housekeeping item, so I promise we'll be easy on you. But if you can, you know, just kind of give us an idea of what's going on, who you are, and a little bit about the change in yourself.
Sure. So Kevin O'Brien, the former GM, just left. He went to work for Jack Abbey, another company. I've worked with Paul Holian, who was the owner over at Splitsville, for 15 years now. And yeah, I just went from being an assistant manager to getting the promotion to general manager.
Okay. So you've been on site. You have... Have you ever had a license in your name before or anything like that?
I've never had a license in my name before, no.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the application from the board? Steph, I know this is kind of your...
Yeah, no. Everything looks good. And obviously, being the assistant manager, usually the manager, like...
Yeah.
No worry about not having a license in his name because usually it's the manager. So if he was holding the assistant manager, obviously, this is a progression for him, and I'm sure you're... Since you've been with them for so long, you're, you know, know how everything works and know. I think it is kind of just paperwork.
Yeah, it's kind of paperwork.
Yeah.
And Katie, any questions, comments? I don't think that there's any concerns from your end, but just checking in.
Nope, nothing from me. And he has been in touch with Tom Attaballino from Fox Cares as well. They've already connected.
Okay. All right, great. So I don't have any further questions. If no one else on the board does, I think we're ready for a motion.
Motion to approve a change of manager for SV Patriot Place LLC doing business as Splitsville from Kevin O'Brien to Brian Peterson.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, great. Any questions from you, Mr. Peterson?
Nope, none at all. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck.
Congratulations on the...
Thank you very much.
You got it.
Appreciate it.
All right. So now we've kind of got one of the more meaty sections of our agenda, and that's the budget. So we have two sub items to talk about here. Finance is going to give us a presentation on the fiscal year 2023 budget, and then we're going to have a discussion about the Government Finance Officers Association Award and Financial Trend Monitoring System. So we'll go through the presentation, and then I'll let Seth probably lead the second item since...
Sure.
You had asked to have this on the agenda and seem pretty versed in it, so...
Okay.
Marie and George?
Yeah. Marie and George are going to join us, so Alex will make the presentation of the budget itself, okay?
And if you guys don't just mind each sitting in front of one of the microphones, wherever you end up, just make sure one's in front of you, please.
Just waiting for it to come up on the screen.
All right, wonderful. So if you guys can just tell everyone at home who you are before we get started, if you don't mind.
I'm Judith Samia, the finance director.
Maria Lidofer, the assistant finance director.
We're just bringing the presentation up on the screen for everyone at home and in the audience.
Here we go.
Bless you.
All right, so good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight for the presentation of the fiscal 2023 budget. This officially starts the budget season. The unofficial start actually began back in November, when we had our first conversation amongst the Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the School Committee, talking about what, you know, the next year would look like and how we would lay out some of the guidelines, et cetera, for how the budget would be prepared. The board did meet back in early December and then provided me with some guidelines and guidance on how we would work on the budget. Now, the board, we recall that we talked about trying to get to a 2.7%, 2.5% budget. We tried really, really hard to get there. We didn't quite get there, but we're very close. We got... Seth didn't think we could do it, but you were right, so I'll give you that credit. But actually, we got really close. We got the 2.73 at this point in time. So I do caution everybody that this is really early in the process because we still are trying to gather information about some of the elements of the budget, including insurances and state aid and, you know, information from southeastern Mass about what they're projecting for their costs over the next year. So without further ado, I will get into an overview of the budget itself. So if you take a look at the two diagrams, one is... One looks at the revenues, the other one looks at the expense side of the budget. The proposed FY23 budget would fund a total of $79,835,712. The breakdown and where the increases came in this year, you can see the total is about 2.1%, 2.73%. The general government amount is up 6.14%, but we'll get into explanation as to why that is. And it's actually because we moved some budgets into the general government, which we're in other places before. And so it actually caused... It's really a... It's more of a switch from one area to the other. So it doesn't... It's really not a full 6.14% increase. Public safety is up less than 2%. Education at 2.6%, but that includes the southeastern Mass school as well. They actually... The Foxborough schools come in around 2.5%, which is great to see. Public Works is less than 1%. Human Services is at less than 2%, at 1.99%. Library came in at 2.54%. I'll talk about that a little bit later. And debt service is actually down this year, which is interesting because it actually includes the Borough School debt in that equation. It was down 4% overall in terms of our expense in that line. Insurance and others is up 4.64%, but that includes several lines, and I'll explain that in a few minutes as well. The water and sewer funds are actually down this year by $31,000 overall. So it's good to see that. I think the folks in town will be glad to see that as well. And so let's go to the next one. On the summary of the increases, the general government side of the budget is showing a larger increase than normal, but we actually moved some funds into that line, which we had from other departments. For instance, we took all the fuel usage and now contained it into one centralized budget line, which is now on the general government side. The funds needed for the town manager search were included in this budget. We included about $15,000 for that cost. That's actually listed under the Selectmen's budget line, as it should, because you're the group that will be in charge of that process. People GIS costs for several departments was included, so that jumped that cost on the GIS side and technology side of things. Land use department reorganization, which moved planning, conservation, zoning, and this is most important, moved the inspections department, which was actually in public safety, into general government as well. So that's really equates for... Accounts for some of the biggest amount of the increase that was in that budget overall. Overall, a 6.14% increase. On the public safety side, the increases to fire is the full impact of the removal of the SAFER grant in FY22. So we are funding the full amount of that grant this year, which paid for the full-time salaries of three employees. These salaries will now be paid from the ambulance receipts. The increase to police is directly connected to the funding for the educational incentive voted to the fall... In fall of 2021 Town Meeting. And removal of the civil service overall increases 1.97%. So not bad overall, and when you think of it from that perspective. Education is up 2.5% in Foxborough. The southeastern Mass, southeastern regional assessment is currently due to increase at 7.5%, though we don't know that actual number at this point in time. It's only an estimate based upon what we thought was the increase from last year. The overall is up 2.6%. Public Works is less than 1%. No major increases. New capital outlay requests identified in the capital side of the budget, which we'll talk about at another meeting. Overall, budget increases less than 1%. Human Services, and that's... Actually, I want to talk a little bit about that because we're looking to actually reorganize along with land use to create the two new departments, Human Services, which will now include Council on Aging, Veteran Services, Human Services, and Recreation. There's no major increases included in the Human Services Department. The overall increase is up 2% for all three departments combined. On the land use side, that increase overall was down, was actually up just slightly, but that included, again, all three departments of planning, conservation, zoning, and building inspection, and economic development all into one budget now. So we're looking to streamline the organization a little bit. These were, for the most part, the smaller departments of veterans and recreation were smaller departments that had relatively small budgets in the scheme of things. Same thing with conservation and zoning and even planning, for that matter. Inspections combined is still not a huge budget overall, but it makes better sense to have one department responsible for all those individuals as opposed to multiple departments and divisional units. So that's my proposal for this to be included in this budget cycle. Libraries increased about 2.54%. And though we started off, and I actually made this statement that I would not look to increase any positions whatsoever, I didn't do that, but the library did. And the library trustees are a separately elected body, so they have the right to push an article forward, a proposal forward. So, which they did. However, they did so in a way which originally they had proposed a budget, which was significantly higher than the one they gave me. So now it's down to two point... The overall increase is down to 2.54%. They did request, and this was considered one of their biggest priorities, was a new part-time young adult librarian, which was something that they had actually asked for two years ago and which I had funded before COVID had actually wiped that out. So this is actually backed from two years previous. They actually reduced their budget in other areas that ought to make this work, so they clearly made this a priority in their overall presentation. This will be up to the board and to the board of Selectmen, as well as the advisory committee to determine whether or not that position will survive that process. Clearly, it was their priority, so I wanted to respect that effort in that regard. Debt services, I talked about, is down overall by 4%. And then insurance and others. The pension assessment is increasing by 7.28% per the Norfolk County Retirement System. The group insurance is estimated to come in around 2.75. We think that that number might be a little bit light. We're looking to try and nail those numbers down, along with the property and liability coverages as well. Increase to the salary reserve budget is needed to fund all of the collective buying agreements, which are up this year. So we needed to increase that number as well. Overall, that line item, insurance and others, is up 4.64%. This is just a chart indicating where the overall budget history has gone since back in 2020. You can see that obviously, the largest increase, largest amount of the budget overall is school, is education. They represent about 51% of the overall budget right now. And then, so the other remaining costs are on the town side. Though it's also important to note that health insurance and insurances, things of that nature, are all the costs that apply to everyone in the town, regardless of where the budgets are. Going over to the FY23 General Fund Expense Budget Summary, you can see that the budget, the preliminary budget is going to be funded through a tax levy of $58,120,000. Has an increase of $2.1 million over the previous year, or a total increase of 3.81%. And the reason that is is because there's new growth built into that number. You take the 2.5% increase plus the new growth, which is about $915,000, as I recall, and that increases that number to 3.81%. Local receipts due to increase by another $1 million to $10,941,981. However, I'll show it to you in a later slide, that that is actually still lower than what the number was in 2019 prior to COVID. still lower than what the number was in two thousand nineteen prior to COVID. So we're still conservative in that estimate, though we do think our numbers are starting to creep back in. And as, and based upon our current, current receipts collected in the town, we are, we are significantly ahead of, of what we estimated from last year, and so we do think that number will come in, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. We do expect a full return to concerts and shows and entertainment venues up at, of a Patriot Place. Along with that, increases in hotel motel and, and meals tax, et cetera, will actually help, help that effort as well. In the other areas of, of, of the budget, other receipts, we'll, we'll, we'll look for a decrease of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Overall, on the, on the revenue total, we're, we're looking at a three point seven one percent increase in, in revenues townwide. On the, on the rev, on the expense side, the government, the town government side makes up two point seven, seven percent. Education is two point six percent, and the shared expenses, debt service and insurance, pensions, et cetera, make up three percent. Other assessments, snow, ice overlay is, is another, and OPEB is another twenty-two point four six percent. So it's important to note in this budget that we do include, include OPEB in the, in the budget again this year. We made a commitment to doing that, when we talked about that earlier in the year, and also, and at this point, what we're looking to do is trying to fund, to find a way to fund the, the final payment, which will bring us up to par, and then put us back on the cycle that we were on prior to, prior to COVID hitting, hitting the town. So the, the, the overall preliminary net amount is, we still have a hundred and eighty-one dollars overall, when we, when we, when we do the final calculation of where the budget is at this point in time.
What are we gonna do with it, Bill?
What's that?
What are we gonna do with it?
I don't know. It's, don't spend it all at once, right?
Yeah.
All right. So, so this is just a breakdown of the levy, the, the, the previous levy. You take the previous levy, increase it by two and a half percent. You add the two hundred, the nine hundred and fifteen thousand in new growth, and you end up with, with the nine fifty-six million, one thirty-eight. You think, you add the excluded debt, which is one point nine million, which is, by the way, is down from the previous year, so about, about one point two, about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and, which is a good sign, because that means that some of the excluded debt is rolling off now, and starting to see that it's just, it's just strictly the, the base, base increases in the, in the, in the debt service.
Is there a detail behind that, Bill, somewhere?
I, not in this slide, not in this presentation, but we can get that to you, when you, we can look at that.
Sure.
And then, so overall, the, the, the total amount of revenue available for the budget on the, on the levy side is fifty-eight million, one hundred and twenty thousand, seven eighty-five. In the, in terms of state aid, our state aid history indicates that we are actually gonna keep, looking to keep our state aid, net state aid somewhere around the same as it was this year. We have not increased that number, though it is actually, if you take a look at the FY twenty-two budget number, that's actually lower than the FY twenty-one number by about a hundred thousand dollars. So we, or by eighty thousand dollars, actually. So, and the reason, the reason that is, is because for the most part, the impact has come from charter school. We're, we're actually, if you take a look at the net increase over the years, the, the amount of increase that we actually receive gets absorbed by the charter school assessments just about every year. So we, we don't count in any additional really state aid for building our budget for that reason. If the, the, the one thing we do hope is that we don't go any lower than what we've actually anticipated for overall state aid. So we, hopefully, we'll, we'll commit at the same number we had from the, from the previous year.
Bill, you know, bringing up that point with the charter school, I remember a couple of years ago, we tried to get together with some other communities that were having this similar issue and, and put forth a proposal to the governor on, you know, inadequacy of us having a charter school. Did that go anywhere?
Well, it actually did, believe it or not. There, there was, there was a charter, there was an education reform bill that was put forward, but it happened right at the time when, when COVID hit. So a lot of the revenues, all the, that was supposed to support that effort, went, came off the table. So I don't know if that's gonna come into play again this year, our fiscal twenty-three, because I do hope that, that, you know, the governor's, you know, last budget will be, will remember what, you know, what was promised, to try and assist cities and towns who have a pretty big burden for charter school assessments. So I, we're hoping that's the case. It's a conversation I'll have again with, with state representative, state senator to see if they can try and help us with that. There is revenue available now at the state level, that revenues have been better than they've anticipated, plus they have the federal aid as well, so maybe they will provide some assistance and some, some relief in, in those lines, hopefully in the next, next fiscal year. I'm due to have another, a meeting with, with Representative Barrows to talk about upcoming budget cycles and see if in fact we can get some relief on that point.
Thank you. As I recall, though, it was the expense calculation that was kind of funky, right? Like it threw in, factored in fixed costs and all kinds of stuff that, so, is that part of that conversation?
It is, it is. And it's, it's interesting that if you were, if the town were to, say, if the town of Foxborough were to, in fact, pass an override, because they needed it for education purposes for local schools, that would still go to charter school as well. So, so because we, we get assessed based upon what it costs us to educate a child here in Foxborough.
Yeah.
So that's, the way that works is that we would, they would be the benefactor of, of a profit that we would have to make in order to, in order to keep our budget going, but at the same time, they would get the benefit of that.
Right.
All right. So let's move on to the next one, which is an indication of our, of, look at our local receipts and a history of that. So the motor vehicle excise is the biggest number that we, is the biggest number on the, on the local receipt side. We don't see actual collections of that typically until February, March. The actual assessment comes out in February and then is paid in March. We do have incremental amounts throughout the year, but right now, we anticipate that number to, to stay relatively flat, and it's still below the two thousand nineteen level. So even though I know there is some concern about the fact that we haven't sold, there hasn't been a lot of new cars sold, this, we do, we do anticipate that might be an impact, not for next year, but the year after. So hotel motel excise tax, we're starting to see that number really tick up again. In fact, we had to actually have a conversation with the DOR about that, because we anticipated a, a big increase in that number. We're already seeing that reflected in, in our receipts for this fiscal year. So we think we're relatively, we're gonna be relatively, relatively close. You'll see that that's still about four hundred thousand dollars less than what we collected in two thousand nine, again, pre-COVID. If you take a look, the really, the, the telltale sign is what we collected in, in nineteen versus what we're projecting for twenty twenty-three, because we hope to be back to normal by that. You can see that, that we're overall, we're in, we're in a pretty good position, but we're still about, it's still about, about seven hundred thousand dollars lower in our, estimates of, of pre-COVID, pre-COVID revenues. It's interesting to note that the actual number in FY twenty nineteen was actually about a ten-year average of what it was in ten, in, 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 collected in ten, in twenty nineteen, was about, was exactly right, right around, eleven point seven million was the ten-year average. So we're still below that average, even in our estimates for FY twenty-three. So we're still maintaining a relatively conservative position at this point in time. Available, in the available fund side, we, we're continuing to appropriate nine hundred million, nine hundred thousand dollars of free cash. I think Seth, you had a question about how we're utilizing this free cash. This is the primary use right now. We will take a look and see if there's any other uses beyond that for free cash, because we will, because we do have the, the ARPA money now, which has been freed up in terms of the regulations, so we have good news to report on that front. So we, we were patient, and we did, and that patience paid off. So, but that, and the reason why that number is included is because that's where we're, we're helping to pay for the debt service for the, for the new school. And, and we also did that through overlay surplus as well. So both those numbers combined are helping to pay the debt service of, of both the town hall and the, and the, and the, and the borough school. Prior to that, we would not be using those typically under those conditions, but we're hoping, still hopeful that we will be winning ourselves off of both of those over time, because we think that the budget will, are the, the, the revenue, that service will drop as well as the rev, the, the, we also think that the revenues will start to increase on the development side, if, if in fact Route One continues to develop as, as is planned. So if we take a look at the ambulance reserve fund, we, we're keeping that number at this, at the constant, one point six million. We've not gone up on that number either. Recreation revolving is still relatively low, though we do anticipate now that that number could actually climb.
But isn't that appropriated, not actual?
That's right.
So we know that's lower, right? For recreation?
Right. We, we have to do an indirect costs at some point, and we calculate it up. It's probably gonna be maybe ten grand higher than.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. So we have to appropriate that still.
Not, not huge, but.
Right, it's not a big number. And then, and that really is for the, for the, for the, in terms of available funds beyond that. We had a few, you know, one-offs along the way. The big one being back in the health insurance fund closeout, a four hundred and sixty thousand dollars back in twenty twenty-one. Seth, you had a question?
So, Bill, the overlay, or George, the overlay surplus there, is that, are we, are we overestimating the amount needed to, to fund this? Or why, why were we at zero, and now we're using three quarters of a, to a million bucks each year? How, where's that money coming from?
One of the things that, that happened, which I still will take my hat off to you folks, is when you did the borough, the, is it the Borough School or Borough School?
Borough.
When you guys did that, in most cases, a town will do what they call a, a debt exclusion override, which gives you the money for the payments for the next, you know, until the thing runs out, okay? Until you're done paying on it. You folks, and when I say not you, but I mean the town in, in general, chose to do it within the debt limit. We didn't take a, a debt exclusion override. Now in comes the payments, which is about one point one million, okay, during the, the principal and interest.
In comes the payments? What do you mean?
Well, you have to make payments, okay?
So that's out.
Well, out, okay, but I mean, you know, they came into the budget, okay?
Yeah, right, okay, you pay out, okay.
So you have these, this now, you have to pay one point one million dollars on an annual basis until, you know, and it's kind of smooth for the next twenty years until you paid it off, okay? Where does the money come from? There wasn't really much choice unless you were gonna cut the budget by one point one million, or you're supplementing it with the, the, the overlay surplus in some of the, free cash. The overlay surplus every year, we're putting, we, it's been this way for a while, it's about one point one million is what we've been raising anyway.
Raising, so it's, it's a revenue?
On one side, it's a revenue, or when you say it, it's, you're actually taking one point one million.
Off the top.
Out of play. Overlay.
Is it an allowance?
It's an allowance for abatements and exemptions. And the best way I can describe it is this, okay? If you were in a business, okay, and you're saying I sold twenty million dollars worth of TVs.
Yeah.
The chances are somebody ain't gonna pay.
You're gonna collect eighteen.
Uh, so, okay. So overlay surplus recognizes the fact that even though we put out this much and we're charging this much, somebody's gonna come back and say, my house isn't worth that, and they'll get an abatement. Somebody else might come back and just not pay it, okay? So what's happening is, is if you put out, I'm just making it up, ten million dollars or twenty million dollars worth of, of debt, of, of taxes.
Yeah.
We're taking one point one million off the top and saying, we ain't spending that.
That's an allowance for not collecting it?
In case nobody pays, right? Or, or somebody doesn't pay, okay? So what that does is it gets taken out of play. And then what happens is, is you cannot release that money unless you've already collected up to, so I'm making this up to, to, to make the point, we've got ten million dollars out there. I've held back one million. I cannot release one, a, 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 a bit of that last million until I've already collected like nine million dollars.
Yeah.
Of what was out there. So it's a, it's sort of a governor against bad debt, so you don't go out and spend more money than you actually took in.
So, so this overlay surplus means that we have an allowance that we?
Have set aside.
Take some back. We take it back.
Right. So then, once you get to that point during the year, you notice how it went down to seven ninety-two, like it was, what, first year it was a million, and then it went to seven ninety-two, and what we're guessing, seven seventy-five. We couldn't, by the time we did it last year, we hadn't collected enough to go above seven ninety-two, to release seven ninety-two into the budget.
So we're taking back a million and a half?
Yes.
So the allowances, the over, the, we're, allowances at one and a half million, and then we expect to take half of it back?
Yeah, one million, one hundred, and then you're taking around seven hundred back after you've actually collected that money.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Sometimes when I hear myself talking, I'm saying, Jesus, I wouldn't have understood that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you explained it as well as can be, so I, it just helps make, I mean, I wasn't setting you up by any means.
No, 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 I, I mean, as long as you understand it, and you get what I'm saying.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
But it's, it's, it's not the easiest thing to explain. It really isn't.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. All right, thank you.
All right. All right, so moving on to the indirect costs, now this is something that we, we do every year. Water indirecs, the preliminary water indirecs are a million ninety, ninety thousand.
We're not with you, Bill, on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm using on my own screen.
I can see you looking at my screen.
I have it on my screen, yeah, there you go. So, yeah, the water, the water indirecs are about a million ninety thousand, same as, as the FY twenty-two budget, and the same thing, since those budgets, neither one of those budgets actually went up, we're probably looking, we're looking at the same number.
And to your point earlier, when you were talking about the, the recreation, this will probably go up, I'm gonna say forty thousand or so.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so, because all the overall cost of us, of our operation goes, still goes up, they, they'll, they'll be charged.
Right now, we just went flat, because we don't know what it is yet.
All right. So this just sort of defines it a little bit better through the revenues and expense side of things in the chart. All right. Same thing with the sewer. Not a lot, not a lot to talk about there this, this year. Again, overall, the, the expense budget is down on this water and sewer fund, down zero point three five percent overall. So the next steps are the advisory committee budget will, will review their, review their meeting schedule and begin on Wednesday, January twenty-sixth. We've given them, you know, that the, at least the, the, the digital version of the budget. We'll continue the planning and forecasting efforts throughout the year. This is the first go-through of the budget, and just a reminder to everybody that, that this is now January eighteenth, and, and the, and town meeting is in four months from now. So we'll be looking at a less than four months. So we're, we've got a lot of work to do in between then and now, and a lot of hearings to go through, a lot of discussion, but this, you know, again, marks the third sub-three percent budget in three years, which is, if you take a look at the history of, of budgets in the town, this is actually quite extraordinary when you look at it from that perspective.
Do we have the schedule for AdCom yet?
We, I just worked on that today with Paul Ivanoskas, the chairman.
Okay.
And so I'll be, I'll be sharing that with you by tomorrow.
Okay, or even if it just goes up on their page?
Sure.
Just so everyone watching at home, too, has a place to look?
Yeah, he wants to actually review it with his committee first, and so I just wanted to confirm that.
So the, the January twenty-sixth meeting is more of a housekeeping meeting? There's no?
Actually, they, they do have their first hearings. I think they're looking at, at DPW and there was one other one.
It'll be posted on there.
I know. It's gonna be DPW on the twenty-sixth, and then it will be schools on the second of February, but Ian, sorry, he wants to just review that with his team, and then he said he wouldn't get back to me till Monday, so we can then post the schedule then.
Soon as that happens.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we still have like the liaisons from nineteen, the members are probably, those look okay, right? Those are updated, those look, those look good.
Yeah.
Yeah, but like the liaisons, if we can put up there, if we can put the schedule up there, you know, whatever they, they get, let's put it on the AdCom page, not only for everyone at home, but then like, it's just a place for us to go and find it all too.
Okay.
That'll be done by next Tuesday.
They're gonna meet remotely, yes.
So, so does that, so does that mean they're going to be televised?
Yes.
Okay, so they will be televised for the twenty-sixth. Okay, great.
I didn't know if that meant, then you could just zoom in.
Yeah, since, since the meetings can't be, can't be, are not gonna be open, the, the meetings have to be televised.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All of them?
As far as I know, as far as I know, as far as, that's, that's.
Or maybe until they make a decision that they feel comfortable going back.
They wanna go back into the room, they can, you know, at that point.
So I know we're not taking a vote, and there's a lot more to come. This is kind of the second budget discussion that we had, we gave the direction, and now Um, so I know we're not taking a vote, and there's a lot more to come, this is kind of the second budget discussion that we had, we gave the direction, and now we're here looking at what you guys came back with. But does anyone on the board have questions, other than kind of what Seth ran through, or Seth, anything else, Doc, Steph?
No, I, I, I just picked up my book today, so I haven't really even, I'm sure I'll have, I took it to George's office, I said, I said, no questions tonight, but I'm sure I'll have a million.
I didn't send these to you in advance, but I do have two questions that I literally thought of as we were sitting here, so, um, number one, probably for you guys, the search committee, um, the fifteen thousand dollars that we set aside, I know a lot of towns have gone through this recently. Have we benchmarked against what other towns have spent to make sure that we're, that we're accurate in what we're setting aside for that?
Yeah, I've, I've actually spoken to a couple of the consultants, they actually do the work, and they, and they, it's anyways between ten and fifteen thousand.
Okay, so we're, we're comfortable, it's a fifteen, that was the first one, and then the other thing, and, and maybe I'm just misunderstanding this, but with the fuel coming out of different departments' budgets, they almost get like a freebie, that their budget goes down because the fuel comes out. How are we rationalizing that to really see where their budget is, because the fuel, you know, they, they almost get that pass with that coming out, but it comes in somewhere else, so are we look, are we looking at their budget to make sure?
Well, every, every one of the, every one of the, the major departments that had a police, fire, and DPW were all sub, sub two and a half percent, they were all, all around two, if less than two.
I, I think what you, what you'll find is, is like, Marie went, went through in, like, or I take any one of the things where we moved things into a different spot, then took that same amounts from the prior year and did it, so you're seeing the actual.
So, it's not kind of falsifying the down?
Right, like, one year it was this, and then suddenly it's way the hell down.
Yeah.
No, because she put the, you know, but she moved the stuff in there, so it'll be the same thing.
So, although we see it on that alignment, it's normalized in the averages that we see, okay, perfect.
And a, a step further is, um, so we get, we receive monthly reports from DPW showing each department's, um, fuel usage. So, obviously, if we see anything, not that anyone would be misusing it, um, there's controls in place to flag that, and, um, but we, we'll be keeping a close eye on that, because if we do see that any departments are spiking, and our budget will run short, we will certainly charge that over to that department.
And it looks like with those departments collapsing, we still have the same visibility that we used to, as far as kind of the individuals, so I'm, I'm happy with that, that was just kind of more of an observation than a question. Um, anything else before we move on to the sub-bullet within the budget?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so Seth, I'll let you, uh, not to put you on the spot, but lead, lead that, that piece of what you're thinking.
Yeah, sure, Leah, thank you. Um, and so, this is just introducing, right, so I don't expect that we're gonna go super deep on this, but this is reintroducing a topic that I've spoken, um, to in years past, even two years ago, so, and it stems from, uh, Massachusetts, state, uh, like finance committee slash, um, town employee or finance committee meeting from a couple of years ago, um, and Bill's friend, uh, John Coder, Coder, I believe his name is?
John Coder.
Um, from Northborough, um, gave a presentation that, uh, really impressed me and, and realized what you could do with, um, with data and information, and, um, so, long story short, um, what's listed here is government, uh, finance officers, uh, officers association award, which is given to, um, ta- uh, cities and towns that meet certain set of criteria for their budget, um, presentation and proposal. And the criteria are based around, um, how the data is structured, how it's shared, um, it's, you know, things like its readability, its understandability, um, and what it's able to do, along with the, the second part here, the financial trend monitoring system, is show information in a way that people are, it engages people because it helps show where the town's been. It helps show where they are, and it helps show where they're going. And there's a, a, I just looked through the Northborough, um, most recent budget book, just to kind of get a sense. Um, and it wasn't necessarily just to compare Foxborough to Northborough, but I just wanted to understand um, more about what, what, um, the program is about and what it can deliver. And if I, I've been speaking with Marie, there's certain aspects of it, and we're moving towards something like this, but what I think it does and what it could do, and I feel pretty strongly about, is it could help engage, um, the residents of the town of Foxborough, the constituents, because understanding is knowledge and it's power, and it helps people make more informed decisions. So, when we talked earlier about, um, free cash and the sources and uses of free cash, I still struggle to understand where the money comes from and how it's used. Um, we talked about overlay surplus. You did a good job explaining that, George. I'm, I, I was a finance professional, maybe not a very good one for a long time, but most of the people on, on this committee and people in town are gonna really struggle with that, so a, a way to show both, you know, the sources and uses of free cash overlay surplus. Another thing that, that caught my attention was just that, that headcount question. And one of the things that, uh, is included in the program of the, uh, the financial trend monitoring, uh, system is showing headcount trends by department. And it can normalize for things like people moving around, but it shows the trends, and it can show basically any types of questions that people in town have, it can give information around that, so, just, and this is my last thing, so Stephanie, a couple of years ago, and up till now, we, we talked about increases in compensation. So, some, some folks got two percent, some got four percent, and it was really hard to, to drive home what the answer was there. This type of program and this type of approach could help people understand what costs are, what the increases are, how they compare to prior, um, how they fit in with the size of the budget, how they fit in with, um, the resources that are, you know, that we're driving again with these expenses, so it's all these things, and it's, it is a lot of work, and it is, um, it would take time. And you can't take this and do it all at once, and, and a caveat, another caveat is I'm not doing this program service by any means, or this spiel right now, like, if we had John come in from Northborough and sit us down and, and show us the power of this thing, like, it made me feel kind of like, oh, man, I don't know what the hell I'm doing, what am I, you know, so, it just, it, it was very powerful, um, and so, I just wanna, I just wanted to introduce it again um, as, as a topic and something to think about and something to have a conversation about, um, and so, I'll, I'll pause and.
So, go ahead.
Had you guys heard of the program?
Yes.
You have, but you guys all obviously have too.
Yeah, so, um, I actually, and John has said repeatedly that he'd become, that he'd be glad to come down and explain it to people if necessary, so, Marie is somewhat familiar with it, because she came from a community that had won the award several times. So, she's very familiar with, uh, with the budgeting award. Uh, the analysis piece, um, John himself was a financial, um, had a financial background, you know, every town manager has a different background, if you will, but and John had that background, he was, he was more the budget guy involved in, in, um, he was up in, um, Chelmsford before, I think he came, before he came to, to Northborough. And then, um, so this was his thing, I mean, he really, he spent a lot of time in this, and he developed his staff around that effort to do that. We're not quite there yet, I mean, we, we do think we're getting closer to doing that, but I think, um, that we, I, I can't put anything more on Marie's shoulders right now, she's got a lot going on. But there, it would require some additional, uh, staff, uh, staff time and, and skill sets that to require, to, to actually have the ability to do that. But we are moving in that direction, and, and I want to move in that direction, it's been my goal. Hopefully, I didn't think I'd be able to do it before I left, but certainly to set the town up in that direction, so we'd win the award in, in the coming years. And also have the analysis as well. So, I think we have, if you look at this document, there's more analysis in this document than there's ever been, I think. Uh, there's a lot more to do, obviously, but there's still, we're heading in the right direction, and, uh, and I, I, I can certainly turn it over to, to Marie to talk further about that, because she's done a lot with that effort up to this point, and I, I really, I think this, this is a great document, I just don't want to take away from that, but but certainly, um, I know this, there's other things we can do as well.
Yeah, um, so basically, what I've, what I set out to do since I arrived here was to work towards that, knowing that there wasn't anything here that was already existing, so I knew I had to essentially start from scratch, use some of what I brought over from Concord, but then sort of make it my own, so, um, if you look at just last year's budget book compared to the new one, um, you'll see that I added a couple more sections, you know, accomplishments, um, goals, those are all things that you see, and that's all part of the criteria that GFOA um, sends out. I know there's, the next piece is, um, key performance indicators, um, which you could incorporate as part of the budget book. There's also the separate, the financial trend monitoring system, sort of a separate thing, but as part of the budget book, you can add things, so like, for example, for finance, we could put on there the number of invoices we've paid, the number of tax bills we've sent out, the number of, uh, W twos, ten ninety-nines, police, fire, how many calls you responded to, how many fires, you know, things like that, a lot of data to show, basically, you know, this department has a nine million dollar budget, this is why, why they need that money. Um, these are some of the things that they do. What I am looking into is, um, there is a program through the state, uh, it's called the, I believe it's a community compact, uh, program. And what they do is, the state, it's a state program, so basically, the town can partner with the state, assuming they have funding available, and what they do is they, you apply, um, there's a set of grants that you could apply for. One of them is for a financial trend monitoring system, so basically, the town can partner with the state, and if they have money set aside, I reached out to them the other day, and, um, they're not quite ready with their FY twenty-three budget yet, but there are grants out there, um, that we could potentially, you know, apply for, that could help us, so essentially, we would bring in a consultant that could potentially, you know, help us, you know, come up with something like that. So, I mean, we are looking into that, um, like I said, with the budget book, I will keep adding more and more data into it, um, and, I mean, the goal is to get that award, you know.
Is the, the financial trend monitor, monitoring system is, is, I believe, is part of the criteria for, um, being, receiving the award, right?
I don't know if, if it's that one, I mean, the GFOA developed the, the financial trend monitoring system. But as far as the budget, you could incorporate it as part of your budget book, I know recently they had, the GFOA had some more changes. But basically, um, trying to think of, um, I can't think of when the last time they had some change, I wanna say it was maybe two years ago.
Yup.
Um, but there are consultants out there that, you know, you could bring them in, like I said, there are grant opportunities out there. You know, we could bring someone in to help with, you know, any of these things, um, except it's not something that's going to happen in the next couple of years, I don't think. But, um, like I said, I, I'm working towards that. And, um, hopefully one day, I mean, that is one of my personal goals, is to see these things come to life, and, um, with the, uh, financial trend monitoring system, the biggest work is actually setting it up, so getting your historical data, you know, your, you go back ten years, and then from that point, from then on, it's just
Maintenance.
Putting in the, yeah.
So, maybe that could be something every year or two that we could have as part of this meeting, is an update on where we are, because it sounds like this is more of like a three to five-year goal.
So, yeah.
And, you know, just like we heard, you know, just like we heard we added this year, how we're working towards it, what we're hoping to add maybe next year to keep ourselves, you know, honest, as well.
In that direction.
So, I, I would suggest it's a three to five-year goal, if, if, uh, Marie's not doing it off the side of her desk, if, if there's resources put against it, and if the town decides that it's interested in this program, it's a seven to ten to never goal, if she's doing it off the side of her desk for the next
Right.
however long, and trying to like piece it together. It's a, it's a commitment, and there is resources.
Yep.
We're already a member of the compact, so, that's.
Yeah, we are, we are, we're a member of the, so we're eligible for grants through that program right now.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, you'd have, once you apply, you're, you can only get grants once. That's why you have to be, you have to know for sure, there's a list of things that you could get grants for. I know just the other day I looked, um, because I am taking a class, and they were talking about, um, these resources, there's also the call-in center over at EMAS Boston, they do a lot of work. They could help you with the budget book, forecasting, um, even the, I asked them too if they do work with the, the KPIs, and they said that they do. So, there are resources out there, obviously, I would like to see us go for a grant or something, um, you know, to hire an outside help that can, you know, so that, you know, because we, you really need someone who's, who can truly dedicate a hundred percent of their time to do this, and we just don't have that luxury right now.
Absolutely.
But it is something that I would like to see with, you know, like Leah mentioned, within the next three to five years.
Yeah. So, all I'm suggesting is if we sort of set it and forget it, and say, all right, Marie, do your best, and, and George is doing his best to, to try to, it's, it's not really gonna materialize, I mean, there's, there's work behind a financial trend monitoring system, if you saw the, so, if we saw the results, if we saw a town that's already doing this, and, and could actually see it in real life and put it up on a screen and be like, oh, wow, there's a lot here, this could answer all the questions that we've had in the past around two percent, four percent, free cash, overlay, everything. So, I'm, I'm a proponent of this program, and I, I, I would work with Marie and George to, to the extent that it's, you know, the
Whatever.
Appropriate. And if we can bring John to, to, to show us and sort of give us what this actually looks like, because he is a budget, he's a.
Yeah, he's budget guru, he, he's one of the best in the state.
Guru, yeah, I was gonna say budget wonky guy, but like. Yeah, right? Because he's not like a, like, yeah, so that would be.
He teaches a lot of the other managers in the state about budgets, and he's, he's the master.
I believe it a hundred percent, because I, you know, I was like, wow, I didn't know what I didn't, walking out of, I was like, I learned a ton, and there's just, I think, a lot of value, and the resources, yes, but I think the, the value that we get out of it.
It's a lot of work upfront, and then once we do that, it's really.
Then you maintain, and there's, there's, the maintenance is not just um, basic, you know, running the reports again, that, I, I think it's a, it's a flexible tool, so that as situations change in the town, we can understand more about, we might have new questions that come up, you know, who knows what's gonna happen. And so, it's flexible, so that it allows us to change and, and help us um, understand where we're going, where we've been.
Well, it sounds like everyone's on the same page that we want to get there, it's just making sure we make it a priority, and you know, as the department shifts, maybe the next couple of years, keeping in mind how we staff and how we move forward.
It's a good time to have this conversation, it really is.
Because too, like, you know, so Bill had, you know, we, for me, it, you know, and how I started on AdCom and learn, trying to learn the budget book was I would just go down the far right column, I'm looking for big increases or decreases, because it tells you something's happening. And I, I'll tell you one thing that for me would be nice to know, is, um, you know, not, not for this year, I just mean even in the future, it's like, so there's a, you know, a, a line item here, and then it's kind of like, so, I don't know, so how many professional librarians is that salary covering? Is it one, is it two, is it four? You, you know what I mean, it just gives us like professional librarian in numbers. And, um, not to pick on library, but I just went there when Bill, when Bill told us that was, that was a big one, so I went back to look, you know, I see two big, you know, I see a, a twenty point nine three percent increase, which I'm guessing is probably another salary, that's why something goes up that high. But then I see on another line, I see an eight point eight one increase, which is a big increase too. So, for me, it's kind of like, well, what's going on there, you know?
So, there, I, I totally agree, Stephanie, I'm just questioning why you say not for this year, like, this year is, you should know, you should be able to know that. And that's why I want to know it too.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, I, I'm sure I could, I could ask the, a department head or whatever. My, my thought when I was saying not for this year was meaning like, is Marie gonna have time to do a whole new budget book over, that's what I, you know, but, but, but we could absolutely ask those questions.
It's headcount, Stephanie, right, so it's just, show me the headcount and the trend, even if it's last year and this year, because then you're gonna see
Exactly.
The changes, period over period.
Are we adding positions?
Yes.
Like, you know, I have, you know.
Even it sounds like this year, maybe some decrease, like, just to know and see that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, you know, and I'll be very interested to, I mean, we, we gave Bill a direction, no new positions. Now, with that being said, I'll be interested when, 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 uh, AdCom, whoever the liaison is for the library, you know, gives their presentation, of course, I'd be much willing to listen to, but we gave a direction, so I want to really know why, and I'm not picking on library, but that's the one you said, you know, that they, they added it, you know?
And they, they worked hard to get to that point, and it was a priority in their budget, so I, I, I have to respect that.
And I'm looking at like, you know, other things they really went, went down on, so, so probably. But with that being said, I also feel like we said no new positions, so if you didn't add a position, even though, they found a way to cut everything else, that cut should come, it shouldn't come just because you want to add a position. If you can make those cuts, you can make those cuts. So, and I'm not picking on library, I, I'm just, you know, when, I haven't heard what, you know, yeah, well, yeah, once, but that's why someone goes and meets with them and comes back and gives the whole schmeal. One other thing, I'm wondering if at some point, I tried to find it, and I know I've seen it before on the town website, but I, I tried a couple of times and I couldn't find it. So, just, um, so is the library director, are they part of the personal wage scale? I know, it's, because some people are.
They, well, he has a, he has a contract, actually, he has a contract.
Okay, so here, we hear a quote.
He, he doesn't have a contract. He was, uh, in some places.
He's a non-union.
He's actually non-union.
Okay.
Oh, I thought he was a contract.
No, so in some towns, the library director does have a contract. What's, what is unique about that one is he's, that position is, is on the non-union pay scale. But what's unique is that the, the elected board, the trustees get involved in that one. So it's just a teeny bit different.
A little bit different.
A little different than that.
Yeah, so, because for me, so they stayed level. But usually I would think that, and, and not necessarily, because you, somebody may come in to replace someone who has just as many years' experience but somewhere else. So that's why I wonder, I'm like, so the salary that was given to the outgoing director is being given to the incoming director?
You wouldn't know that until after the, if the process is complete.
Oh, 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 okay, you're just budgeting that, you're budgeting that number.
It could come lower.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we won't, we won't know the number until they actually hire that person.
Okay, okay. So that, that's why, that's why I'm just like, so I'm looking, I'm saying, okay, so we're budgeting the same number when, you know, actually I would think that based on the scale, there's a lower number for incoming for certain positions.
And that can be adjusted, once you, at least once you know where it is.
We used, we used to think that, take that for granted, but you can't do that anymore. Because given the limited number of candidates you have, sometimes you have to pay similar or just a little bit less.
But if we have a scale, shouldn't we, shouldn't that be the number we're using? I mean, why would we have a scale?
It's true, but if, if you have, if you have a limited number of candidates for a position and you have a qualified candidate, you have to position yourselves to the point where you can actually lure that person here. And if they, and if, it may be that, that, that the number that they want is similar to the one, number that the previous person had.
Okay, well, to me it would be like, why have the scale then? I understand what you're saying, but I mean, there's got to be somebody.
In a year like what Bill's saying, if you had an overabundance of people and you had 10 or 12 qualified, you know, then you could maybe do something, but sometimes if you, if you're limited.
So moving along, just so we're not in too many of the specifics, kind of looking forward for us and for people at home, I think ClearGov is another good reminder. It's right on the finance homepage. You can go in and you can look at a lot of this. You can even put in your property tax amount and see how that's appropriated. It's really cool. So that's on the finance homepage. Are we at a place where we can add the FY23 budget book? There is a spot for it. Are we there that we can add it? Can we get it out there and we're not ready yet?
Yeah, I have, I could just, we could just upload the PDF.
Yeah, so let's, let's upload the budget, but, so that will be available, just like we're looking at this right here for everyone at home on the budget book page on finance.
With the caveat that obviously it's going to change.
Happened. This is, this is the starting point. And then, you know, getting back to what Seth mentioned, it sounds like everyone's on board. I think you need to let us know how we can support you, what the roadblocks are, you know, and how we can get it to just not being something off the side of your desk. You know, to really, to really move it forward.
And honestly, until, until the rest of you see it, it's, it's hard to imagine what this actually is. So it's, I'm talking to it, Marie's done it. It's, it's hard to see what it, what it really, the power of it.
Yeah, I can share with you guys. I have John Cutter. He actually taught a class that I took, I want to say a couple of years ago. And more, most recently, he sent me, he sent me their most recent, they basically do a separate report that goes over it. There's a long list of trends that you could pick from. I mean, there's different ones. There's ones I look at your population, your tax revenues, your expenses, the age of your population. There's so many different ones. But I mean, like I said, you know, once you kind of pick the ones that you want to use going forward and it's just a matter of setting it up and then it will be less work after that. But I, yeah, I could, I could send you guys that report.
That to kind of send you in the direction of what your budget should be, Seth? Based on those factors or?
It just informs the various components of the budget. How they relate to the drivers of expense and revenue. So it, it really, it's tailor, you can tailor it to your town to answer those specific questions and types of things that, that we want to know. So.
Kind of digest and interprets a lot of the number into usable.
And it shows, so for example, you're going to see headcount across all the departments trended over time. And that's just a standard submission and, and component of the, of the document and the process.
It sounds like headcount's maybe one we want to work for next year, you know, if, if it's possible to put it like, it sounds like that one comes up a lot.
I would like to do a table at some point. If you actually look at the, the org charts just below all of them, there's a, a full-time equivalent count. So if you wanted to just compare last year to this year, you could see the differences there. I just don't have an actual chart with all the departments listed out, but each individual department has its own org chart with their FTE number.
You know what we used to have, Marie, too, is where we are for this current year, where our, at, like when we would get our budget book, the actual, with what was budgeted, where we were at this point.
We do have that. I, I.
Oh, that was over there. Okay, okay.
So it's, I put out there a history of the operating budgets, a history of the free cash, the certifications and the uses, and then I ran a report as of today for both revenues and expenses. So it's all.
And with that being said too, I, I did learn why, why it was nice that somebody would go meet with department heads too, because we would be sitting in a meeting and we would look and I would say, okay, well, they're budgeting $50,000. But right now they've only spent $7,000. So why are we budgeting again for next year? And then it just happened to be fire. Chief Hatfield said, what happens is though, we spend the bulk of that in the spring, because, because that's when we order hoses and, or, you know, you know, so. So it would give you, you know, so even sometimes the actuals don't, don't line up because you, you say, well, why are we budgeting $50,000 when we're halfway through the year and spend seven?
Right.
You know, so it's kind of nice that they then can understand because they don't spend, it's not like your mortgage payment, your car payment, you know.
It's not even.
It changes all, all through the year when they're spending their, their money.
Just maybe to come full circle, maybe sometime in the summer after the elections, Mayor June, maybe have the gentleman come and make a presentation with the new.
It might be most impactful.
The new board and, you know, we've got five people on and.
Perfect. Ready to go? It sounds good.
And hear that proposal.
That's a good idea, Mark. So just to kind of wrap things up too, great work on the budget book. I think last year it was pretty amazing to see where we were versus where we are. I, I personally find it easier to interpret every year. So thank you for all your work on this budget book. It's, it's a lot of work and good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would second that too. And I talked a lot about what the agenda is. I was, you know, strong, but this is clearly a lot of work and it's, it's a great document. It's powerful and I appreciate all the effort that went into putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Ditto. 200 pages. Whoa, so, thank you. All right, so with that, I think we're ready to, to move on.
Thank you all.
All right, great.
Thanks, George and Marie. And thanks to all the department heads too.
I'm sure we'll be seeing you around.
Thanks to all the department heads too for the work they put into this as well, because they were very cooperative and helpful in the process as well.
Yeah, as educated as everyone can be going into town meeting will make everything smoother. So everyone knows how to reach everyone if they have any questions, so.
Great.
Okay, all right, great.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks. All right, so just as we wrapped up, special town meeting, we're getting into annual town meeting and, and articles that are coming up. And there was a lot of discussion about, you know, articles going on the warrant. One had come up about marijuana, both retail and cultivating. So retail, you know, selling storefront and cultivating being growing. Someone had come to us, which I think some of the gentlemen are here in the audience, kind of asking if Foxborough had an appetite to revisit that again since about 2017. And during that discussion, I had mentioned, you know, I think culturally Foxborough is a community that wants to know what's going to happen. They want to know where it's, what it's going to look like, is more than like vague general ideas, especially when it comes to this. So we had talked about, you know, maybe a citizen's petition being the best route to go for them. And then, you know, come to find out per their attorney, it was maybe not the best way to go because they could do the citizen's petition. And then someone could come out, someone could come in and, and take that license essentially from them. So it, it brings up the idea, you know, of the planning board, sorry, of the Board of Selectmen supporting a marijuana article to go on the warrant. It's not like we'd take a vote tonight and it moves forward. But do we want to put this on the warrant for it to go down the process, since it is zoning, to go to planning board, public hearings, town meeting, and everything again like it did in 2017? For me personally, I think in 2017, it was kind of a scary and new thing. I know I remember sitting in town meeting and voting against it. Here we are now, five years later. You know, it's all around us in Mansfield, Sharon, even a community like Sharon, I know, you know, probably one of the most conservative communities around here have, have made the switch and it hasn't, it hasn't, at least from me, you know, looking from another town, it hasn't had a big impact besides possibly financially helping them.
Could you be, just be specific on made the switch to, to what?
To allow.
Allow.
Marijuana.
Sale.
Sale, well, they'd be separate, sale or cultivation. So I think the town would have to say, do they want to allow? One, either, both, neither.
Yep, so sales means a dispensary?
Yeah, retail, yep.
Yep, okay.
Cultivation, I just learned this all too, means actually growing it. So you could cultivate it and not retail it, or you could retail and not cultivate, or you could do both.
Got it, thank you.
So with this coming to us, and it was, it was right around special town meeting, I think it might have been the week after. So there was plenty of time leading up to it. I am open to it going back onto the warrant to be looked at again through all the long process that it goes through. But I wanted to have a discussion with the board to see if that's something that you guys would be in favor of placing on the warrant.
So I, I agree, I agree with you to, like, it, it, things have changed and it's not, because it's, there's so many, like, you know, I'm, I'm driving to my parents in Stoughton and I drive by two of them that are like, like 150 yards apart from each other. What I've heard, I don't know a ton about it, but what I've heard is the communities that are hosting really benefit financially. Would, would you know that, Bill? I, I, that's what I've heard. I don't know if it's true or not.
They actually do.
Yeah, and I think would have to have, like, that would be a discussion would have to have and would have to, you know, what does zoning look like? Where is it appropriate? I don't, I don't think anyone thinks like uptown is appropriate, but is maybe, you know, industrial or Route 1 or, so there's a lot of conversations that would kind of come in education.
And I think the, the people that did come forward that were, that were interested, I mean, they were going to clean up that, right on Route 1, that little gas station corner, they were, it was just a mess there. They were going to come in, clean it up. And there wasn't an appetite for it at that, at that time. I mean, everybody was just like, no. But the, the thing is, it's, if you can go to these other communities right around the quarter from us and they're benefiting, I think, I, I, for me, it'd be worth just looking into again anyhow.
Yeah, I think two things historically. One, the place on North Street, Route 1, that was a close vote. That was a three to two vote not to have it. There was a lot of discussion. There was a lot of press in the paper on, on both sides. And it was, that was going to be the medical dispensary. You know, you needed a medical marijuana card to, to, to get that. Then the other thing, when we voted it down at town meeting, I think it was so early in the process of legalizing marijuana that I think the tact we took as a board at that time was, we don't know where it's going, we don't know what the regulations and the state was going to be. And I think we voted it down, and I always forget the legal term, with prejudice, without prejudice, meaning, I think it was without prejudice. That we could bring it back again. And the only reason we're voting it down was because it, there was too much ambiguity at that time. So I think this is a good time to bring it up, bring it back to the town, have a good, strong discussion, some good history, find out what some of the other communities are doing.
And it is a zoning article, so it will require two thirds. Am I correct or incorrect on that?
I think that's, I think that's true, yeah.
I believe it would. So it would, it would be us putting it on, but it would really be planning board, from what I understand, that would kind of shepherd a lot of the public hearings and, and the education that we could, we could join. And I imagine that Mr. Weinfeld will have conversations with his board to see how, how, how they are feeling. I think both boards would have to, you know, be in favor of at least putting it forward to have the discussions to move, move on. I think there'd be a vote later in the process after everyone's educated. Seth?
Understood.
Okay. So any, any objections with us putting a placeholder to, to revisit this again on the warrant?
Not for me.
No? Okay. Okay, so I think that there's a lot more to come. But I think that this board is, is supporting putting it on the warrant to talk about it more. Mr. Dudley? Do you want, do you mind just coming up? And just let everyone know who you are?
Sure.
Although I think most people know.
They may or may not, but I'm Bill Dudley, 36 North Rose Street. So I have a question for all of you. Are you going to talk about the human cost? And when you do your analysis as to whether this should be in Foxborough?
I think we'll explore every, every avenue.
Because I, I've taken part in burying a number of kids from drug overdoses in this town. Drug deaths are skyrocketing all across the country. And it's obvious the connection with marijuana as a gateway drug, including legally sold, legally, not so much morally, sold, including in Foxborough. There's a human cost to this. So before we glibly look at the money, I have a whole history to give you here at an appropriate time. So I'm wondering if that will be part of your conversation.
Yes, and, you know, I, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but since this is a planning one, there'd be a public hearing. You know, it is also meetings with the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, but there would actually be a public hearing where the public could come in.
You're making a decision tonight, though.
We're making a decision not to support the article, just to put it on the warrant. So it will go on the warrant.
So you could make a decision not to.
We could make a decision not to put on the warrant, yes.
So I, I would make the decision not to. I, I didn't think that that was necessarily any vote or anything, but if maybe it was three to one, or maybe it was two to two, or I don't know, but I, I in favor of what Mr. Dudley's speaking about, so.
Okay. All right. I don't know, Bill, I'm looking at you, if you need a formal vote for us now, or if that's when the warrant article comes out, what is the timing of this?
Well, right now there is no article. So, so until someone, until someone presents something, it's really, I mean, all you did was have a conversation about whether or not you, you entertained such an article to come forward and whether, whether it would be worth a person to present one. A person's effort to present one. So, and if somebody wants to present one, that'd be the time to say no. But if you're not interested at all, that's also important to let people know that too.
So it sounds like the applicant is not looking to put forward a citizen's petition any longer and this would, is looking to have it be a Board of Selectmen sponsored article, from what I understand.
I, I do believe that there is, and it is, there is, there is technical, there's a technical concern here that if, if, if it's just put out there by an individual, then they could go through all the, all the effort to put it, to put it out there and then have the, the, the license actually taken by someone else, because if they make, if they offer a better offer than someone else does to, to, to get the license, then that could be, it could be taken right from underneath them if they go through all the effort. So that's the issue and whether or not it makes sense for the, I mean, there's, there's also the other, the other avenue that to determine whether or not the town itself is comfortable with the concept of doing it. And the board may recall this, but you actually did a citizens, a non-binding referendum on this issue that came up just prior to the election, but just prior to the town meeting actually on this, back in 2017. And maybe that's a way to, you know, get this discussion going again, is to see if and how the community feels about this issue at this point.
Okay, so it would go on as like a ballot question?
It would go on as a ballot question.
It passes as the ballot question, then it moves forward?
And if, and if it was, if it was supported, obviously, it would, there wouldn't be enough time between the election and, and the town meeting to, to actually have it, unless they, they were submitted at the same time. Then the board could, then, then the town could act on it at that point. But the alternative actually would be to see what the town says and then present something maybe in the fall. There's another option.
I mean, I'm in favor, I'm not, not saying I'm in favor of voting for it. We'll all sit at town meeting and, and we'll all vote for it as a town, but I'm in favor of putting it on the warrant, on the warrant to hear more and have those discussions and have those public hearings. And it is one of these issues that there's people on either side of it strongly and to hear both sides of those.
I am as well. And I, and I think everything you just said, Mr. Dudley, will, will come up.
Completely.
You, you know, for, for whether it's people who don't, I personally, I don't use marijuana. But I know lots of people that do and, and to your point, I would say that what you're hearing now too is that with all the fentanyl, now it's like, it's, they're finding it in everything. They're pressing pills. They're lacing marijuana with it, everything. I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with anybody, whether it's the gateway to further drug use or everything. All that stuff has been, you know, has, has been laid out. But I will say that the people who are going to use marijuana are going to get it somewhere. And if it's, if it's a safe way for them to get it compared to buying it on the street. um, like I said, it's not gonna affect me personally, one way or the other.
It's not safe.
And, you know, and so, but I think all of that will come up in, in discussions. I don't think, I mean, I don't wanna speak for the whole board. I don't think we're, we're sitting here tonight and saying, yay, let's, we're moving forward with this. I think it's just to be able to have a conversation about it.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't want you to feel that we're, we're making some, we're making some decision tonight, other than letting it at least come forward for discussion.
To hear more.
Yeah.
Learn more. So do you need a vote from us? When, what does this look like, Bill? Where, where do we go from here?
So if, if the board wants, wants to entertain this, then we would put together a, an article for town meeting.
Okay.
We would put, we'd put a placeholder in and develop the language accordingly. I think the, I think the, the, I think the preliminary indication was, the last time this was visited, was that the location for this would be up on Route One.
That was very strong.
Yeah, I think that, I feel like that was, I don't know where we have industrial in town.
I don't know of any other location in town where that would be appropriate, given the circumstances. But, um, but I do believe that was the location. So an article would have to be that, an area to be, uh, you have to identify an area where it would be, where it would be sold, right? And I think that there are lots, lots of concerns, of course, on both sides of this issue, and it's one that, uh, it gets vetted quite, quite often. And, and if you take a look at the facilities that are being built, they're, they're actually quite, um, state of the art, you know, in terms of what they, they look like. So they're not areas that, that are really detrimental to the community from, at least from a, from a, it's not, it's not like an unsavory type of, of a location. But it, it is obviously a debatable issue, and some people feel very strongly about this. So it's obviously one that's gonna, gonna raise some concerns.
Okay.
It'll be a long night at town meeting.
Yeah.
If it does, I guess. Lots of, lots of discussion both ways. Yeah, and I think also, didn't we have an article that you can't, why do I feel like maybe a couple of years ago on AdCom, remember the big dip, talk about it? Don't we have an article that you can't even have a smoke shop downtown? Uptown, I'm sorry, have adding uptown, uptown happenings, um, uptown, or like vape and stuff. Didn't we have an article?
Selling of vaping products?
Yeah. I remember that one.
Yeah, that it couldn't, like, could not be, like, the zoning uptown was none of that. So I think that would be huge in this article, too, where it's gonna be.
And I think the planning board would also have to be on board. So although this would be a Board of, of Selectmen sponsored article, I think the planning board would have to be on board to move this forward as well. So I think that they, they should.
So, so the starting point would be to take a look at the area where they were considering doing it in the past, and then re, you know, reevaluate that article, determine if it makes appropriate sense to, uh, to put, to move that forward for further consideration by the board at, at, when you consider the warrant.
Okay, so do you need a vote from us at this point or no?
I, I would think you would, yes.
All right, so, um, all those in favor of moving the, the marijuana article, marijuana article forward, and I believe it would be two, from what I understand, one for retail and one for cultivation, because there may be an appetite for one and not the other. So all those in favor? All those against? Okay. All right, so I think that we will just at least open the door to have more discussions and move that forward. There'll be plenty of other, other times as well to dig into this more. I know I'm interested in hearing more as well.
I spend a lot of time with people in, who are struggling in recovery, trying to live. And I've known a lot of people who have died. So you understand, I feel strongly about this. And there are some things, the money isn't worth it, the state of the art isn't worth it, a human life is what matters. So thanks for letting me.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Dudley, I completely hear and understand everything you're saying and certainly look to, to hearing more on it. And if I, I could ask you, Bill, too, to take this to the, to, I know Paige is out, but, you know, whatever the right means is, maybe to get this to planning board for them to get an appetite, because I think that both boards would need to have an appetite.
Bear a letter accordingly, or then submit it to the, uh, to the planning board for consideration.
Okay, all right, great.
And just one more thing I wanna add, so even anybody at home, and just so Mr. Dudley knows, I know we talked about the money. It's for, you know, I'm only gonna speak for myself. It's not, it's not about the money, you know, I mean, it, it is one factor, but if someone can drive, you know, a mile out of town, it, you know, it, you know, the, I, 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 I know exactly where, where you're going, and I agree with you on those points, but I just didn't want anyone to think that this is money driving this.
No, it's, it's definitely a sensitive topic, and, you know, people will feel, will feel very strongly on both sides, and we just need to, you know, make sure we have respectful conversations and hear each other out and, and learn more, because I don't think anyone, you know, we're not taking a vote tonight. That'll be town meeting, and there's a lot, lot to learn and hear from each other. Um, so also with that, just talking about warrant articles, um, Katie, are you still on?
She is, just give her a second.
Okay, remind me, it was, do we want to have the non-solicitation article? Oh, and to change us to select board? And I said, as far as I understood, based on all the directions we, all the discussions we had that night, to have a placeholder to move those forward, we could always pull either of those articles. But just so you know, other ones that we've talked about in the last six months, that when Katie reached out to me, I had said, let's keep a placeholder and, and move those forward as well, since we discussed them in the past. Right, Katie, the door to door and, um, select board?
Yes, you're right.
And I think we were just waiting to get a cost, too, not that, again, not that it's just money or that it matters, but I think that, um, Bob was gonna go and, and get some sort of idea, are we hundreds, thousands for the change to the select board, just to kind of have an idea as well, that, that would need to come as part of the presentations?
I haven't spoken to Bob. Um, Bill, have you reached out to ask a possible quote?
I have not. I know that he, he mentioned, he mentioned the last time he was here, he was gonna look into that, but we have not.
Okay, if we can just circle back on that, on that piece as well.
What was it, the cost of what?
To change all the manuals to select board?
Oh, yeah.
Remember that? I think that was just an open to do that was in.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, aren't there, didn't we also discuss, aren't there bylaw changes?
Yeah, he was kinda gonna give us an appetite for what the whole change looked like.
Bylaw and.
And is it a software thing, that it's like a find and replace, or, you know, can we do it as one motion? What does it, what does it look like? So I think we just need to, let's put the placeholder on and let's, let's keep it moving forward.
And the other one was the issue of the, um, of the solicitation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would love to opt out of people coming to my door, but it seems like an easy enough one. Uh, town council already looked and found another town, and seems like a quick and easy one we could put on there. Okay, um, I think that's it, closing out those items. Anything else article wise, or? All right, so we're on to town manager's update.
All right, just a couple of things to, to bring to your attention. One is the fact that we have good news on the federal aid, uh, federal ARPA front. Um, during the past week, the, uh, the federal government, Treasury, the US Department of Treasury actually issued its final rules on spending on, on ARPA. And the big change, uh, I'll take this off for a second. The, the big concern that we had was that we were restricted in, in how we could spend the money based upon the fact that we had done a calculation on lost revenue, and it identified in the, in that calculation that we had also taken in a six million dollar grant, which was earmarked for the, uh, for the borough school. That, based on the previous regulations, would have offset our losses for the entire year. So we, uh, then set upon an effort to try and change that, or to influence that language at the Treasury, US Treasury Department, which, um, I have to say, based on the efforts of Congressman Arkenclaus and, and Senator, Senator Mar, Senator Maki, rather, uh, they were both very successful. Their staffs were very helpful in trying to get change done. And, uh, and the change that they did make, uh, was actually made it very simple for us to use that, those funds now. And in fact, they provided what is effectively known as, as a ten million dollar waiver, uh, right up front in terms of the, the regulations. So that, uh, even if you didn't meet, lose ten million dollars, you had, you could, if you lost up to ten million dollars, you would automatically be eligible to start using the money for almost any reason you, you needed to. So, so we have now an ability to spend, uh, up to five point five million dollars of money from both the county as well as the direct federal aid to the town of Foxborough for, for those, for that, uh, for, for that use. So, um, it's a pretty wide open area. We were actually trying to get a little more clarification on, on a couple of things, but generally speaking, um, I think now the, now the conversation turns to, okay, what do we spend it on? And I think that's a conversation that we should have collectively. We've identified a number of things. But most importantly, though, I think one of the biggest concerns we've, we've had is that we've not been able to spend a lot of money on, on capital needs over the past few years, uh, when, and there were some projects that have lingered because of the fact we haven't had the funds to do those things because of, because of COVID. So I do think now, now is the time for us to turn to those conversations and see what's the priorities. Um, so I, I would like to put together a, a conversation. I'll work with you, Madam Chairman, identifying a time, what's best to do that, to have a conversation with, with stakeholders to see what's the best decision, how the, how the money should be spent. We'll give you, we'll provide you some, some guidelines on that as well, yes.
So is this go, do we circle back to CIP on something like this?
Well, we, we would, it, a lot of the things would come to CIP, but I do think that, um, there are other, other areas we might wanna look at as well, and I think ultimately we'll look at this as effectively a two-year funding source for CIP-type projects.
And, you know, my, we'll put this on the agenda so we can all have our ideas, but I don't want this to just go into the operational budget. Like, I wanna do some stuff that we wouldn't normally be able to do or fund with this ARPA money. Like, I don't want it to just, you know.
No, no.
Our intention is.
Uptown projects or whatever it may be, I'd like Bill and the department heads to maybe come to us with some project ideas. Um, you know, Paige, I betcha has a, has a, her and I have been involved in a lot of discussions, so I would like to make sure she has her, you know, ideas brought forward. But I think that we have to have a, a high-level direction discussion on this as a board, maybe, you know, the next meeting, on what, where we'd like to see this go, and then, you know, maybe get down to the next level after that.
Well, I'm quite certain the list will be long.
Right.
So.
But we have to start with that long.
Exactly, so, and I, I think we just have to look at it and then say, okay, what, what makes the most sense? A goal, I, I think a short-term goal should be that we should try and limit the use of free cash over the next few years, until we rebuild it, to the point where we feel comfortable using it again.
Or never use it again.
Well, well, I don't know if you'll ever get to that point, quite honestly, but I, I really know, because if it's possible to financially do that. But, um, but I do think, though, that at least limit the use over the next few years so that you can still get some, some of the bang for the buck, so to speak, with, with the money that's there and, and address that. And Maria and I talked about that along with George, and we talked about the fact that we could potentially have a, a two-year capital plan uh, that, that is not funded with anything but ARPA money and, um, and not impact free cash as a result of that.
Just for the sake of argument, Bill, if, if you had a free cash balance that trended at three million dollars every single year into perpetuity, you're not using free cash at all. So you're, you're suggesting it is a, um, sort of a fund, uh, an unreserved, unreserved fund, or, you know, for when necessary?
Well, I, I think the classic example of how you utilize free cash is what we just went through, all right? In other words, we needed, we, we took some hits on our local revenues, and we were able to use free cash to balance those.
Yeah, when needed. But otherwise, if we're, if we're constantly recharging every single year and taking out every single year, that's where the disconnect is for, I'm sure for most people. I don't know if anyone else on the board understands free cash. I certainly don't. I understand it. I don't know how it's used or where it goes. I still can't tell you, because we're using it and recharging it every single year, so it's this big wash of stuff in and out. And that's what, that's where I get lost, and so that's a conversation for another day.
That's a big, that's a bigger discussion. But I, but I do think, but, but generally speaking, I, I think what the goal is to, is to make sure that we're being prudent in how we use those funds, uh, going forward, and that, uh, we wanna continue to, to maintain a certain level to, to, to keep, you know, the town protected from these, sort of these offset type of events that we never, never really anticipate.
Agreed.
So we're already at the end of January. I don't know how that happened, that our next meeting is in February. Um, but I don't think the two weeks is probably enough time for you to come to us with that list. Maybe it is. You, you tell us. But I think in February, we'd be looking to have the next level of conversation.
First of all, I don't think we can, the good news about this, this is not budget-sensitive.
Right.
Per se, other than the fact that we, if we are gonna have a conversation about capital, uh, we should have the conversation, uh, we need to have that by, by March. But yet, the, the regulations, the new regulations don't become effective until April first. So we, um, so, and then, but that does not require a town meeting action to appropriate for, uh, use of ARPA funds. So that's the good news. So we do have a little bit of flexibility on that point. The question then becomes, okay, what things will go to town meeting, what things won't?
Okay.
Now, I think that's a conversation we have to have.
Okay, so we'll look to you to when, when you're ready to have that next level of discussion with us. But I think that, I think we're all sitting here saying, let me know if I'm misinterpreting, but that we're, we're looking to do something special and not just, you know, put it into the operational budget.
Sure.
And then lastly, I, I would just, uh, would notify today that the, uh, Law Enforcement, um, Magazine, uh, officers.com, Officers Magazine, rather, designated, uh, the new summer facility for one of their awards for design. Uh, so they, it was for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, the design award, two thousand twenty-one design award, uh, for the new facility that they just built. So, uh, congratulations to Castle Booze, who was the designer of that building, and, uh, for the, for the final result that they achieved.
Did you have something, did you wanna say something about having the list come to us with where they'd like to go?
Just a, just a quick thought on that. Um, so thinking about using ARPA for something maybe outside of what we would do without it, um, Foxborough's, I think, in a position where when we have a project that needs resources, a capital project, we tend to, we tend to fund that project. And I know the last couple of years have been lean years, but I, I would, I don't know that there's anything that we're saying, this has needed to have been done for years and we haven't. So it feels like we take care of the most pressing capital needs, and then there's things that are, haven't made the cut because it's, it's not as pressing, or else we would have taken care of them. So, uh, what I'm expecting from Bill is maybe not as, um, uh, earth-shattering or, or unique. Um, I don't know that there's anything that you're gonna put in front of us that we're gonna say, oh, we should have been funding that for years, or it's just the next thing down the line that is maybe less pressing, so it might not be that many.
And I've had a lot of uptown meetings, and there's a lot of, like, uptown stuff that I think that we need that's not gonna probably be in the capital budget.
Okay.
But economic development-wise, you know, whether it's, you know, the parking lot behind Central, or, you know, seating to gather, like,
Yep.
That's kinda where I'm thinking, like, those type of projects that I've heard come up.
Okay.
That would probably not be in capital, but let's do something that we wouldn't normally do.
So it's.
A combination of both?
Yeah, both, yeah.
Yeah, in all likelihood, it's gonna be a combination of both, because I think.
So Bill and his department has to kind of bring us that list of everything they've heard.
Yeah.
Since this has come about.
Because there are, there are some pressing things that we've been trying to do, we just haven't been able to follow.
Like, it never even made it to the table because, you know.
Well, like, one thing that we really do need to do is, like, take down the, the old, uh, building at the, uh.
The laundry building?
The laundry building.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a pressing, you know, we gotta do that. And then there's other things such as, you know, uh, maybe looking at the parking lot is, is a project that we haven't, isn't really on anybody's radar screen. And, you know, then maybe looking at, you know, design dollars for some of the, like, for instance, the Public Works Building.
Exactly.
You know, something like that, stuff that we, that we know is gonna be coming up, or even at the, the, the community center or that type of thing, you know.
What about that, sorry, what about the building that's on the old, the old hospital, and it was considered for?
That's the laundry building.
That's the laundry building.
No, it's like, it's like the auditorium.
The auditorium, yeah, the auditorium.
Building could, could that be awesome, or is that just like, take that down or what?
Paige has taken a couple of people through. Um, there's people that have been interested, no one that's come back, but I don't.
The problem is, it's expensive to renovate and expensive to take down. It's expensive to, 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 to just level it. So it's, it's, it's a challenge. It really is a challenge.
It just sits and.
I know. Remember when we used to start the old haunted house there back in the day?
It's almost like, I don't know if you ever remember the Worcester Memorial, the Worcester, the Worcester Train Station, the old, in, in Central.
I actually remember that last weekend. It's beautiful now.
Yeah, it's beautiful now. They, but, but that sat vacant for years because it was too expensive to tear down and too expensive to renovate.
Yeah.
Finally, somebody, they, they figured out a way to do it with federal dollars.
Yeah.
They, they figured it out. So, but that's, those are the kind of things that, you know, you have to look at it as being unique.
I mean, it's only gonna get worse, right? So at some point, it's gonna cost more to do later than it does to do it now. I'm just, we're thinking out loud, but anyway, all right.
Definitely, Kate, that's one's on Paige, Paige's radar, though.
But I totally get your point in terms of what you're talking about, so that's helpful. Thank you for.
And I totally skipped Mike. I am so sorry.
No worries. Yeah, no, no problem.
My fault.
I was having a little snooze. So, so first I wanna talk about recruitments, and then I'll talk a little bit about, um, COVID-19 stuff. So, uh, under current recruitments, uh, we did hire a full-time van driver, uh, Michael Pitts from Foxborough. He'll be starting with us on February seventh. He's a, he's a career driver and a Navy veteran. Uh, before I go further, I know that the board would like to see these ahead of time, and I'll do that moving forward to get that to you the week before. I didn't do that, um, here, and I apologize. Um, we, um, that full-time van driver position became available um, when our full-time van driver over at the Council on Aging and Human Services applied for the part-time position unexpectedly. That's something he wanted to do. So Gary McDonald, who's been with us for quite a while, uh, he'll be starting the same day, February seventh, as our, as our part-time. Again, an internal candidate, um, who we didn't expect, but we're pleased, uh, that, that this, it's his lifestyle, uh, time of his life veteran. He, he's an Army veteran. Um, the fire department administrator position that I've talked about for a while. about for a while, um, we did fill that position. Um, the, the new person will be starting January 31st, and her name is Dawn Dennis Kurt, and she has a, um, a career background in, in public health administration, um, as a, as an administrative assistant. Um, and she's coming to us from the town of North Attleboro. She'll be starting, as I mentioned, on January 31st. Um, three other positions that we have currently in process are the community caseworker over at the Council on Aging and Human Services, a water department coordinator, a position that opened up because we hired internally, moved someone up, and the library director, um, position. And, um, on the COVID-19 front, I just wanna talk about a couple of, um, I guess, um, legislative mandatory sort of things. The first one is that the, uh, the federal OSHA emergency temporary standard, as most people know at this point, um, that was overruled by the Supreme Court. And the town had made a decision to, um, to engage our labor attorney in putting together a, a policy, um, for that. And that conditional policy was shared with all the union presidents. And, um, on the 13th of January, when we got word that the, uh, that Supreme Court had overturned that ETS, um, I reached out to all of the union presidents and told them that, as promised, uh, if the Supreme Court overturned it, that we would be abandoning that policy, which we have. Our, our hope and desire is that our employees, um, who are over 91%, um, you know, vaccinated at this point, will continue to voluntarily get vaccinated, get the booster, uh, because I think we've done an extremely, um, you know, a good and thorough job of making those vaccines available onsite to our employees to keep both our workforce and the, the public safe, um, who we engage with. Um, and then the last couple of things, masks. Um, you'll notice that folks are wearing masks. There is not a state mask mandate. We don't have a town mask mandate, but just, uh, you know, per the governor's order, we are highly encouraging them, uh, and people have been really good about wearing them in, in our public buildings. Um, and then the last thing is that, um, you know, following CDC guidelines, when someone has a positive case, uh, we're following those guidelines strictly. And so if we have a, an employee who is, um, quarantined, um, and then it finishes their quarantine period and is asymptomatic and returns to work, then they are required, um, by us, per CDC guidelines, to wear a mask for an additional five days. That's the only mandatory mask. But, uh, we see folks regularly wearing masks, and, um, and we think that's working really well. And that's all I have.
And then, Christina, just to tag on to yours, Christina posted how people can get their four free COVID tests on the town website as well. So that is a federal program for per address. You can go online. You can sign up for them pretty easy.
I did it today.
Yeah.
Where? Do we see it?
She, she. Covidtest.org, and it's just on the town social media. I'll get it up on that.
She put the link right on the social media. You can go to that.
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nice little reminder. I clicked on it. Thank you, Christina. Um, sorry for skipping over you, Mike. I think, I think that's it.
No, no, no offense taken.
We've hit all my selectmen's update items throughout the night that I had. Does anyone else have anything, old or new?
So, so just a quick question, Mike. So, um, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna go with a mandate. So what, just refresh me. So what we're doing is, if you, if you're a town employee, you choose not to be vaccinated, you have to wear a mask?
That's, that's correct.
And you have to test?
No, they do not have to test.
That was part of the.
But they, but they must wear a mask.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So we, we've chosen to, you know, to let people make that choice. If someone feels very strongly that they are against it for whatever reason, they do not have to. And I, and I will say, it's a very small percentage of our employees, and we are respecting that right.
And obviously, we're still meeting in person. I know some towns are going remote, but everyone, everyone's masked, and we encourage that for our boards and committees that, you know, choose to meet virtually, like AdCom, we talked about early today, or those that are in person as well. Okay, anything else? Selectmen's update? All right, I think we're ready to move.
Ooh, I have one thing.
Yes, yes.
Can, uh, I just wanted to share something. Uh, you know, I always like to bring that little feel-good thing. I just wanna say that, um, I spent a couple hours this afternoon with, um, the queen of Foxborough, Ms. Joni Goodwin. Um, so, um, she was in rehab for a little bit. She got home about a week ago, um, doing good. And, um, one of her granddaughters said that she would love, you know, if someone wants to come to visit, so I gave, gave them a call. So I went over and spent a couple hours with her. And, uh, I just wanna mention, if you're a friend of, of Joni's, and, um, you know, she would probably love if anybody wanted to come over and spend an hour, just catch up or whatever. Um, you know, she's a, she's a special woman to this community, and she's, she's given a lot of her time to, to our children, driving buses and, and whatnot. And so I just wanted to throw that out there, that she's, she's doing what was nice to, was, like, you know, she's, she's a woman that you can spend some time with, and you leave, and, you know, you're just like, that was such, like, I was like, I had such a great time with her. So anyhow, I just wanted to share that. If anyone knows her, wants to throw a little shout out to her, um, she'd probably appreciate that.
Thank you. All right. So with that, we have seven action items tonight. It's a long list.
Yep. Um, motion to approve a Class II auto license for Boost Unleashed Incorporated with the restriction that no cars are allowed on premises, and no auto body repair work is done at the address listed on the license.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is this, I just don't remember seeing this one. Was this a late add, or did I just miss it?
No, no, it actually has been in here. And he's just looking to buy, he's looking to get his license to buy and sell parts.
Yep.
And he understands that there's no, um, he actually offered to come in, and I told him I didn't think we needed, he needed to, because it seems pretty cut and dry.
Yep.
Um, so it is conditioned in here that he cannot buy, sell any of that on his property.
Where is it?
It is on Windsor.
He just needs the license in order to go to the shows, be able to enter and, as a dealer.
Oh, cool. Okay.
And I'm saying Windsor, 'cause I know where he lives, um, but I'm looking for the application to confirm it, but it's not nearby.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, so we had a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. All right. The next two, I don't think I've seen these, but there was public hearings and all for them. Um, and then they land with us.